Okay, it is.
Seven oh nine.
Seven oh nine. I'd like to call this April ninth, two thousand twenty, meeting of the German Township trustees to order.
May.
May. We all have, we have the valedications.
Valedications to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Easton, can we have a roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Stubbs?
Here.
Mr. Potter?
Here.
All are present.
And just for the record, we have Road Lieutenant Jeremy Holbrook present, fiscal officer Mark Easton, IT specialist Scott Hamilton, and Deb Cross present.
And Chief is present on the line.
So now we have visitor comments, so if you want to make a comment, just state your name before your first time up and then talk to us.
Do you want to stand up?
Yes, thank you.
Well, I don't want to hold everybody else up, so if everybody else has got something, we got a lot of questions and we're seeking answers. My name is Clayton House, live seventy-one fifty Conservancy Road. My wife, Dr. Vandenberg, she lives there too now, moved back from Texas. She has to live with me. Okay, and we've got a lot of questions. We don't want to hold anybody else up, so if there's anybody else that's got anything, I'll be more than happy to let them go. We're just regulars here enjoying the show. Do you want to join the show?
Can we speak together?
Yeah. Just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Beth Vandenberg, address one oh two Conservancy Road.
Okay, first question I got is, how is the BCA committee people selected?
They're appointed by the Board of Trustees.
It'd be you guys and your elected officials. I've seen all of your names in yards and on ballots many a times.
Correct.
Okay, that's why we're here. We have some questions because of stuff that's been going on, and we're going to bounce all over the place, but I got some straight-up questions that we want to ask. Have any of you guys read the environmental impact report on the school?
We have not. I have not.
I have not.
Don't you think that would be something you would do?
Well, just to be clear, the BCA is a totally independent board, okay? Once they are appointed, the trustees don't have anything to do with them.
Okay, but they are appointed by you guys.
Exactly.
You guys are elected. They're not. I didn't vote for none of them.
Correct.
Okay, that's why I'm here talking to you guys. You guys are the ones that's in charge of the safety and welfare of this township, correct?
Correct, yeah.
At this point in time?
No.
Okay? So I ask you, why has nobody on this board read that report? I know the answer. Let me give it to you?
Give us the answer.
There's not one. Fifty-five million dollars project in my backyard with every parking lot draining into the creek, okay? And there's been no environmental impact study done, zero. I'm asking the board to step in on that.
Well, I think that, again, if you're going back to the BCA, which is where you've been headed, I think, and the BCA makes their decisions independently of the board, your questions, although valid, are really are something that needs to be addressed to the schools, the school board.
I have. Okay?
So we came here because the BCA said that if we had anything to say to contest the variance that they approved was to come here. So we have talked to the board and we've talked to them, and they said to come here.
This is our next stop.
There really is not, I mean, once the board makes their decision, you have twenty days to appeal that to the common pleas, and that's basically for the people that are, they're presenting to the board. If they're unhappy with the decision, then they have twenty days. So basically, you can come to us and talk, but this is going nowhere. I mean, I hate to say that because, again...
Okay, so you're going to tell me that the board has no concern about what's going on in the township?
I don't think he said no concern. I said, I think he said, it's not in our court, basically.
Right, exactly.
I think it is, from what I've researched. Okay? Have you guys researched it?
This, yeah.
You oversee the BCA.
First time you bring this to us.
Well, so we appoint the BCA, but they're a totally separate body. We have no influence over them, and that's the way it should be, and that's the way it is.
Okay, so there's no point in us talking about any of those standards violations or instances that things that they...
There really is not. I mean, you can make an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but, you know, chances are that's not going to go anywhere either.
Well, I guess because they told us to come talk to you.
Well, that's why, we know where to go to next. I was hoping we could do this like normal people, okay? And come to a resolution on this. They've been changing this building plot, and it keeps creeping closer and closer to my backyard, and I'm not going to have it, okay? I didn't move to the township to have backup beepers going four times, six times a day. If it's in your backyard, I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't give a crap, okay? But it's in my backyard, okay? So they changed it from the first design, which I was okay with, they're just going to let it go, and they keep moving it back and back and back until now they give us this one here, and it's a hundred and ninety feet from my property line. I have a big issue with that. I thought I'd come to you guys because I got no problem with sitting down, and they go back to the original plot and move it back up. I'm okay. How far was it the first time? We have pictures to show you. The little one is the one that they posted...
Yeah, sure.
The little one is the one that they posted online and was online up until two months ago. Two months ago is when we got involved.
Yes, we didn't mind this one because they have parking, like all your extra noises out front, the school's up here, if you can see that, and then we're back here. But then, this isn't even what they have online. Do a side-by-side comparison. They've moved all the noise to the back, they've moved the fields farther back. There's barely even a buffer on the property line, so...
And which property are you just started in?
Uh, we're...
We only have, we only have ten feet of connecting property, but we're going to be the closest neighbor to the building.
Because this is our land, but...
The house to, we're, to what part? To school bus parking lots?
Yeah, to school bus parking lots.
Or what, everything? Probably our house is in the center of our property and everything, so our house is probably going to be three hundred feet, three hundred and fifty foot. You know what backup beepers sound like?
It's close enough, we're going to hear it.
I know you do. Okay? Can you imagine seventeen of them? Okay?
Thank you, but this one, we didn't, we weren't going to say anything. We figured it's going to happen, but at least it wouldn't impact our enjoyment of the property where we're living. But now, like I said, with every progressive drawing, all of the noise gets pushed farther and farther back. In the next drawing, and this is an exaggeration, but it kind of feels like the next drawing, they're going to be on our property, on our property, right? And right now, it effectively is with the noise, and like you said, there's no, there's no plan for the pollution, any water runoff, they don't have any plans for that. Lot of other issues we can, we've tried to tell the board.
There's tons of issues. Farmersville can't handle the sewer.
Well, again, I appreciate you coming in here, but this is really nothing that we can...
Well, I wanted to get, I wanted to give, I didn't want nobody to say, you should have said something.
Oh, exactly.
So I, I'll move on and, well, the legality is handled.
Okay, well, appreciate you coming in. I bike down Conservancy all the time, so I bike down Conservancy all the time, so I go past your house, but I'm not sure quite where you live.
So you're saying the BCA is who to talk to?
No, the BCA is not who to talk to. That, that line is over. The BCA, once they make their decision, it's after twenty days, that's, that's, that's when the window is closed.
The window's closed.
The window, let me go again. Once, once a decision is made by the BCA, the applicant say they don't get what they want, meaning it gets turned down, the applicant has, the applicant has twenty days to go to the common pleas court. You have no recourse, unfortunately, that, you know, you weren't the applicant. You know, if you want to legally go after the school board, whatever, that is certainly your prerogative, but the BCA has nothing to...
No, I've been told legally it goes after the BCA and the Board of Trustees here because you guys appointed them, and, you know, there's so many of these rules. Okay, have you ever read the conditions for conditional use?
Yeah, I was on the BCA for about eighteen years, so I'm pretty into it.
So there was none of these followed?
Well, the BCA, again, and I'll emphasize, they make their decision independently. So what I think, what Jake thinks, what Lou thinks, make no difference. They are independent in their decisions, you know, or, it's basically quasi-judicial. Once they make their decisions, just like a jury, you can't go back and say, hey? And so there really is no, no recourse for you as far as the BCA, you know? That's, that's just the way the system up.
Right, I've been told it's, it's with the Board of Trustees and the school board.
Yeah, right now, we're...
It's really with the school board.
Everybody's pointing fingers at each other, saying, it's not me. I can't do anything about safety, I can't do anything about roads, I can't do anything about this. You're all pointing to each other, so that's what I'm saying, who do we talk to?
You, you need to talk to the school board.
We have.
Well, then, then, you know, I can't tell you, you know, I can't give you any better advice than that. That's the people you talk to. The board, the Board of Zoning Appeals, you know, in that case, the, the school needed four variances in the conditional use, and they, they, that's what they applied for, and that's what was...
With nobody there speaking for any of them? Not even the people that applied for them couldn't even answer a question?
Well, you...
It's kind of kangarooed.
I, no...
And I'm just calling it what it was.
That's the way the system, system works. I mean, I, it's, I think it's very fair. You have five of your residents up there in the BCA, they're, they're basically making their decision on...
Not my residents.
Well, they're residents of German Township, so, you know, they may not be your neighbors, but they're residents of German Township, and they're listening to the, the facts that are brought forth at that hearing, and that's how they make their decision. They're not influenced by anything else. So they made that decision, you know? But again, you're, you're talking, the variances in the conditional use has nothing to do with what you're talking about, the EPA drainage, so, you know...
Well, it is. You guys are here to protect the values of German Township.
We, we are.
We took oath. Did you?
Sure.
Yeah. So, but, but again...
Do, I mean, you did, and this is, this is, this is the values of German Township. When, when you have water running off parking lots into streams, going into Little Twin Creek, going into Twin Creek, okay, that is an EPA concern.
Have you...
It should be a concern of your guys'...
Have you contacted the EPA?
No, I haven't. I've come to talk to you guys because, okay, once again, I didn't want nobody to say, you should have said something, okay? I have said something. I see it's not going nowhere, so now I will go where I need to go and I will do what I need to do because...
Yeah.
We have talked to the Farmersville wastewater engineer, and they've confirmed that they can't handle the additional sewage capacity.
Yeah.
Which is not you, because that's over there.
That's Jackson.
Again, someone saying, not my problem.
This is also a direct result of the school board trading the property that was in Jackson Township for the property in German Township. One of the conditional uses here states that there cannot be a result of what the owner has done. The owner traded for the property in German Township. It is a result.
Well, again...
That's not a not, I mean, that's the school board again, that's not our decision.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's in German Township, and you're the Board of Trustees.
Yeah, we understand that.
Okay.
But again, I don't...
All right, but you guys took an oath?
Yes, we did.
Okay? And this violates about half of it.
Well, appreciate you coming in.
You have a great day.
Okay.
I did good.
Can I see that lens drum? Those two go right up top? I'm a local engineer, so it kind of falls in my bellywood.
You can't find it online.
Would you like us to make a copy of it for, for you?
No, no, that's okay. I'll, I'll get it. There, there was supposed to be a retention, like...
A dry bed in front?
Yeah.
But that's, that's a dry bed, it still, whatever goes into it will go out. There's no separator.
Eventually, yes, it will.
There's no separator.
It's also in front.
It was supposed to be bigger, it was supposed to be bigger than that.
Right. They're not following any of the rules they're supposed to follow.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. I haven't seen that latest one.
Is there anybody else that needs to speak about the comments? Okie dokie, that's it, we will go to the fiscal officer's report.
Okay, let me turn on my camera. Okay, there we are. Good evening again, everyone. Let's start out with the minutes. I've given you the minutes from the April eleventh regular meeting. Are there any corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the four eleven twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
I'll say it.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I have also sent you all of the financial reports for the month of April. You have the April thirtieth fund status report, the year-to-date cash summary by fund, the month of April cash summary by fund, the April receipts, and the April payments. And I have three items I want to point out to you and those watching and attending. First of all, receipt number forty-nine, which is the amount of, net amount of four-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-one dollars and eleven cents, and that is our first half tax settlement from the Montgomery County Auditor, and that is, and the reason I'd say that's the net amount because it's, the gross is larger, and then the election fees and their, their processing fees are taken off of that, so this is the net amount they give us. I've not yet received the homestead and rollback payment for the first half from the state of Ohio, and so until I get that, I will not be remitting the joint levy payments over to the city of Germantown. Last year they came, those payments came in sometime in May, so most likely later this month, if I get that payment, I will be paying Germantown. Secondly, receipt number fifty-seven, a small one, but it's four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and it is a refund from Vernon and Flower for the unused portion of my fiscal officer bond. And as you recall, the township switched from bonds to faithful performance insurance at the beginning of this year. My, my bond is the only one that the trustees had to pay for, so for the portion that wasn't used of my four-year term, that's the refund. And finally, fifty, I received fifty-eight for one thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-three cents is the annual capital distribution that O-Tarma, our insurance agency, insurance company, gives us each year. And with that, are there any questions about the financials? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the financials, also authorize the payment of all the April bills, which is warrants five zero five seven eight to five zero five eight one, and vouchers two seventy-three through three eighty-three. That's for payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the April financial reports and authorize the payment of April bills, warrants five oh five seven eight through five oh five eight one, and vouchers two seventy-three through three eighty-three for payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This next item is a request from the city of Germantown. At the May second meeting, Germantown City Council appointed Frida Emrick to the senior oversight committee for a term ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. This appointment also needs to be approved by the trustees since it is an oversight appointment, and we can do that by motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Frida Emrick to the senior oversight committee for a term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three.
Say it.
Any discussion?
How did they ever come up with the process of filling that at-large seat? Do we know?
I was told they had four applicants. I was, beyond that, I'm not sure.
Right, because it was supposed to be someone specifically in the Germantown seniors committee that dispathe us.
Exactly, since that disbanded, then we did, then it was all up to them.
Okay, okay.
Do we know who the other applicants were?
No, I don't know all of them. I was just told there were four. Okay, we did vote on that motion, I believe, so I'll move on.
No, we didn't vote.
We did not.
Discuss, we didn't.
And let's vote. I've already written down that you've approved it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, the next item I think I will skip because, Dr. Cross, I think that's on your report. Okay, every year at the May meeting, the trustees approve a resolution declaring May fifteenth as peace officer Memorial Day. I have sent you this year's resolution, and that would be resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two. Lots of two-twos.
All right, I'll introduce resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two, a resolution to recognize and show appreciation to all present and former Germantownship police officers and employees for their contribution and dedication to the betterment of the Germantownship community. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States has designated May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the Germantownship Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens of the unincorporated portion of Germantownship, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police departments, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And now therefore, therefore, the Germantownship Board of Trustees, Montgomery County, hereby resolves that, the section one, that the Germantownship Board of Trustees will commemorate the sacrifice of America's peace officers by recognizing May fifteenth in the Germantownship, Montgomery County, Ohio, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in accordance with resolution ninety-six dash twenty-four, and fly the township flag and have staff in their honor on that day. Section two, that the Germantownship Board of Trustees thank and recognize the hard work and commitment of the employees of the Germantownship Police Department and their continued efforts to serve this community with integrity, dedication, and honor.
Is there a second to resolution? Thank you. Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing now, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two is adopted and well-deserved by our police officers here at the township. Thank you very much. I wanted to let you all know that on April twenty-first, I submitted the first annual report to the Department of the Treasury detailing our spending here at the township, or actually lack thereof, because we didn't spend anything this year, but it's a, I have to report the spending of the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds. And I did include that report for your review in what I sent you for tonight's meeting. We've received documents from the Ohio Township Association related to the federal procurement requirements for purchases using the ARPA funds, and I've sent you those documents, and I also sent them on to the prosecutors for their review prior to requesting your approval of a related resolution. And I think I included you, Mr. Holbrook, on that also. I also have asked the prosecutors to provide some additional guidance on some other questions related to the use of ARPA funds. So assuming we get a response sometime this month, I'll bring that back next month. If we need to do something sooner than that, we can always call a special meeting, but we will have to approve these procurement rules before we spend any money, even if it's a small amount. I'm going to ask you to approve a resolution giving me the authority to transfer funds between our accounts at First National Bank of Germantown and the Treasurer of State's Star Ohio Fund. And it's very likely, or very possible anyway, that prior trustees may have given this authority to my predecessors, perhaps Mr. Keener, or even before him, Mr. Roebuck, but I do think it might be beneficial to reaffirm my power to make those transfers. And here's my reason. The interest rates at First National Bank, which we, at the end of April, we had one point nine eight million dollars on deposit with them, we earned point oh five percent interest. Our Star Ohio balance at the end of April was four hundred and fifteen thousand, and it earned point four one percent interest, eight times higher than First National's interest rate. And since the end of the month, Star Ohio has now raised its rate to point seven percent. So I would like to be able to move money. Prior to doing that, I will contact First National and give them an opportunity to match the rate, and if not, I'm going to send some money up to the Treasurer of State to be held under the Star Ohio account. And if you agree that I can have that authority, we'll make that resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Okay, I introduce resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three, giving the fiscal officer the authority to transfer funds between our accounts at First National Bank of Germantown and the Treasurer of State's Star Ohio Fund.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the resolution?
I'd like to say something if I could.
Yes, please.
Mark Keener, seventy-eight sixty-five Jamaica Road. So I just want to make sure that he's got the authority to move it as he sees fit, because I would imagine he's going to be active in watching our balances, watching our bills, and moving things, so, perfect. I was wanting to do that, and I never had time to do all that when I was in your position. So the other thing is, First National Bank will be happy to have you do that, because under the terms of them having the custodial oversight of public funds, once that account hits a million dollars or higher, they actually have to go through all the trouble we're doing overnight investing with the Fed, and it is a major pain for the bank to do that. So First National Bank will be grateful for you doing this, Mr. Easton.
And they're currently purchasing one and a half million dollars worth of funds to support our checking account balance.
Yeah, exactly. And that goes, and you probably know this better than I, but I believe they do that on a nightly basis, so it's a purchase, like at the close of business, and then they redeem it back with the Fed the next morning. I mean, it's all electronic, but it's still just kind of a pain, so, thank you for doing that, Mr. Easton.
Up until this month, those two rates were close enough that I didn't worry too much, but that's a lot of difference.
That's a lot.
And we have a lot of money on it.
Yeah, so it can be some serious.
And it'll help our taxpayers by moving that. Any other discussion? I'll call the roll then. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three is adopted. I sent you also a invitation from the Valley View Schools for their groundbreaking. That is going to be held June second at two o'clock. This is the invitation that came to the elected officials, and prior to the ceremony, a lunch will be provided from twelve thirty to two. So if you are planning to attend, you should RSVP to Terry Lewis at the Valley View Central Office. I think I'm going to go. Should be interesting to see this process. And my last item, again, as I'm lying, it's nice to be able to plug our events, but I want to invite everybody to the Memorial Day program at Veterans Park, followed by the pilgrimage to the cemetery. This program starts at ten AM, and it's always one of my favorite events of the year. David Short will be, again, honoring many of our older veterans. The cemetery always looks great on Memorial Day, flags are everywhere, it's just a great day to be an American and to live in Germantown. So I hope everyone will turn out for that event, and with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. We have the police department report. Is Chief still on?
First of all, we should thank the Board of Trustees for the resolution recognizing Peace Officer Memorial Day. The only thing I have to report on is from this past Saturday, it was shred day. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend. However, my staff advised that it was a success. I do not have the total weight shredded yet. We're still awaiting an email with the final toll.
We're turning the hell on the...
Public records, prescription medications. We took back more this year than we have in the past couple of years, so on all fronts, the shred day was a success, and that concludes my report.
Thanks, Teague. I'm ready for my report, Jeremy.
I sent out a couple of emails today, and the first thing I'd like to do is open a sealed bid for the two thousand twenty-two chip seal program. This program was advertised in Germantown Press for the week of the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth of April, as required. Has not been opened yet. I would like to open it and read the amounts, and then review them during the meeting, and possibly pass a resolution to accept if everything looks in order. Either doing old business from new business, if that would be all right.
Is that the only bid?
The only bid was from Ray Hensley Incorporated, thirty-seven ninety Craigville Road, Springfield, Ohio, four-five, four-five, five-oh-two. It's a unit quantity bid per square yard for labor's in materials based on an estimated square yardage of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and nine square yards of chip seal, more or less, depending on bid prices and the township's budget. If you remember, on our list of roads, we had Chimp Road, Moyer Road, and Kiefer Road, and all varied portions of those three roads. The per square yard price came in at two dollars and thirty-nine cents for single seal and four dollars and seventy-eight cents per yard for double seal using MC three thousand asphalt liquid. With that, I'd like to review that during the rest of the meeting, and we can make a decision.
Do you have an appearance and doc master?
I can look that up real quick, but that was one of the things I was going to do. Going on with my report, Butter Street resurfacing our joint project with the city of Germantown. Barrett Paving Incorporated has completed the milling on Butter Street. They did that on Monday. And after a good deal of inspection on the southern, no, northern section of Butter Street, north of lower, there was a lot of problems with the edge of the pavement, and that's where we were seeing a lot of deterioration, that there was like absolutely nothing left after they filled that surface off. So I went ahead and had Barrett's do quite a bit, five hundred and thirty-some feet of deep repair along that edge to shore up the shoulder, because there was just, there wasn't even gravel. You could watch the trucks go over the edge, and it was just, yeah, it was bad. So with that being said, that's still a unit cost ODOT contract, so we're okay with spending more or less due to the fact that it's already been a big project through ODOT standards. We might, depending on where the price has come out at the end, we might have to up that eighty thousand that was originally okay through the resolution of the joint project, giving me, you know, giving us the authority to go into the project with the city of Germantown. But we might have to up that cost depending on where the pavement ends up and the asphalt that we put on top. So I'll keep a close eye on that, both Chip, the city of Germantown, and I have been in close contact on farce quantities and all that, so hopefully it will get closer to being done. We're supposed to pave, this coming Thursday, I believe, is the date of the paving, so we should know more then, and then by the next week, you know, I'll be able to report more on where we're at.
May twelfth. May twelfth, right?
May twelfth, what I say.
As far as under.
Oh, I'm sorry, May twelfth.
We review and always miss something. I hear you.
The only other things I need to report on is Scott and I are probably going to start a roadside ditch mowing this week. They're getting pretty shaggy. Started spraying the gargrails for noxious weeds, and continue to mow the cemeteries every week or so. That's all I have.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and give the zoning report. Item number one, Kristen Hamburger started on four-twenty twenty-twenty-two. Everything's going smoothly, and I greatly appreciate her stepping in to fill the zoning inspector position. Kristen is in the office from eight AM to eleven AM every Wednesday. I am currently in the office from four to six on Thursdays for document drop-off. In the four weeks, I've had one document dropped off, so I'll decide if that's where it's necessary to give us an appointment to drop things off. The zoning office issued two zoning permits for home additions last month. The BZA is planning on meeting on six fourteen twenty-twenty-two at seven PM. Looks like there will be at least two cases that evening. The Valley View Local School District has turned in their application for the zoning permit to begin construction on the new PK through twelve building. The ten thousand dollar fee will be deposited once the permit is issued, and I hope it will be this, this Wednesday. The board can then decide if we wish to use that funds for any particular purpose, because it just goes into the general fund, correct?
Correct.
Due to medical problems, Delone Jones needs to resign from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Marty Cox has agreed to step in as a regular board member, so I'll advertise the open alternate, alternate position in a few weeks. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Delone Jones and move Marty Cox to the regular member of the BZA. Second.
Paul, any discussion of the motion? Paul in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So the next thing, a little bit more involved, I'd like to go ahead and present an updated Germantownship zoning fee schedule. And if the board approves, once we look at this, I would recommend that the updated schedule goes into effect immediately. So the old schedule is this one. Got that, right? The new schedule is on the, with the blue leather end. The biggest change in the schedule is, the new schedule is formatted to better organize that schedule. New format, simple, that's binding the correct fee, but also allows residents to know what is required to process their case. So on the left side, you'll see fee description requires hearing, so that means that you can go either consulting for the BZA or the zoning commission. The bottom below that, it says requires permits, and basically all you do is to make a, fill out a permit for recent additions or anything like that. If you look at the cost column for conditionally used variance or conditionally used lot split, the fees were simplified to the base fee plus fifty dollars for each conditionally used variance or lot split within the same case. In most cases, they come before the BZA, usually there's a conditionally used, and usually there's a variance. The most common one is they're splitting off a couple acres from their farm lot, but the lot doesn't have enough frontage. So it makes it very simple, so they apply for the conditionally used for the conditionally used lot split, which is the same thing. So that would have that base fee, but we don't charge fifty dollars for each additional variance or conditionally used. So it just makes it much easier to figure out those fees for the applicants, so they know exactly what they have to do. And basically, the paperwork necessary for the conditionally used or the variance is exact same, and they're adjusted the same hearing, so it doesn't seem fair to charge an additional five hundred dollars for additional variance. And again, the only difference is the application, various applications of conditionally used, because everything else they supply is, is exactly the same. As far as the fees, most are the same with the exception of the certified mailing fee that was modified to better cover our costs. So basically, the first ten, if safe, fifteen letters have to go out to a joint property owners. The first ten are free, after that, six dollars for each additional, because they all have to be ready to turn the page, so that's what that cost does to do that. So that kind of controls that, we don't get caught up in, like when the gravel pit was being discussed, there's a load of registered letters having to go out to this, or meant me, as I can say. The maximum for the new commercial construction, again, was put at ten thousand dollars, like we decided last time. And a fee was added for the construction of new decks and for an ag exempt declaration. Before, we weren't charging anything that, but there is actually some paperwork involved in that, some time for the fees on the inspector's, so tune to that. I did discontinue the fee for zoning text copies. Basically, that's the big zoning resolution book. It's three hundred pages, but now it's online, so there's really no reason, I think, for anyone to want to get a copy of that. So if they want to play the hard copy, they'll always have one in the zoning office. So I got rid of that fee. And a disclaimer was added to miscellaneous fees to better conform with Resolution two thousand and twenty-nineteen and two thousand and twenty-three-two that was passed last year by the trustees. Note that these copies must be at our cost for the two thousand and twenty-two Orange Sunshine laws document. So that's the, you can put a few down there, but it basically has to be our cost, so it must be known for sure that it's twenty-five cents per paper copy. If we ask for a hundred copies, we can probably figure that out, but I don't think any of us knows how much the paper copy is actually cost to the trustees. But, but anyhow, we'll be putting that down, so. And also note that the new fees won't apply to the cases that have already been submitted because I think it's already been submitted, and it's a help, and we won't go back and change the fees. Questions? It's a little bit to throw at you, but it's a little bit different format. I think it just makes things look a lot, a little bit better, and a little easier to register for the applicants. That looks good. Clearly, you put a lot of time and effort into this. Deb did all the stuff, and I cannot take the credit. I just said we need to come up with a new fee schedule.
So the ten dollar ag exempt that just covers basically the time and paperwork?
The time and paperwork, again, because, you know, the zoning inspector does have to fill out the form, and it takes them some time to get all that, you know, the information from the, from the person that's applying. So, thought it was appropriate, and we can do it for you, but it does cost us some time and money, so. Mr. Potter, any questions?
No question.
Okay, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to introduce Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-four.
Correct.
To accept the Germantownship zoning fee schedule updated as of five-nine-twenty-two. Second.
Any further discussion of the resolution?
And the only other thing, if approved, we'll go ahead and put this updated on the Germantownship webpage for zoning, so people can actually go to it and see what the new fee schedule is, because up to now, it's been nothing on there, so.
I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-four is adopted.
Thank you. Kristen, note that this is the new fee schedule when she comes in. So finally, I want to thank the entire Germantownship staff, including Shawna Close, T. Fanzick, Jeremy Holbrook, Scott Hamilton, Mr. Easton, and my wife for getting the zoning department and Township Digital Services up and running again. Some issues are still being worked out, but due to a truly team effort, the Township services are being restored. I mean, these guys, you two certainly, Jeremy and Scott, went above and beyond, and the chief and Shawna too. Everybody contributed to get things going with the zoning office itself and get our digital machines going again. We're still working on some things, but it's better than before, so I just want to thank them for that.
Thank you.
That is the end of the zoning report. And Mr. Potter, do you have a report?
Yes, went down to the parks, the park board. We discussing the M and I, what they're going to be doing up there, what they hope to be doing up there. First off, they got the flag pole, they want to, Dave is going to be talking to Doug's company and seeing, it's the pole, I don't know if a tree fell on it or whatever, but anyways, it's bent. So either they want to try to get it straightened up, or they want to try to fix it one way or the other. And then I've got some fillers out trying to get some quotes on getting a Forrester machine to come in there and clear out the undergrowth in the area as per day rate, and we'll see how many days, one or two or ten, or whatever we can, whatever we can afford, or how much they want to take care of. So we're working on that. They, Tom did ambush me a little bit about the money that we're keeping on, on the park board. So they will be coming to talk to us, to try and to renegotiate or re-figure that out. And I assured them that nobody was keeping their money, and that we was just doing it for, I gave them the example of the pool liner, that we had some reserve back, and I said something like, we'll just have to figure out what a, how much money that we think we need to keep in reserve, and then any money beyond that, a hundred percent will go to them, beyond that. And any money that we had to use out of that for emergency, when it got built back up, then they would get the full amount again. So we just have to figure out.
Have to negotiate.
Have to negotiate, what that will be. And then, of course, I talked to Jeremy, Tyler too, everything moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Potter? Mr. Stubbs?
A couple things tonight. Cemetery, they're full on for Memorial Day prep. They're in their second mowing cycle and their first weeding cycle, so it's full speed ahead trying to get the cemetery looking nice for Memorial Day. We've updated our policy on the number of cremations allowed per grave, as well as the price for burials. Saturday, Sunday, and holiday, the fees increased. Previous policy on the cremations was two. We've changed it to at the discretion of the sexton, because depending where you're at on the hill, sometimes you can get two, sometimes you can't. But if you're on level flat ground, depending on what has happened before, it's possible to have more cremations on one lot. So we changed that policy, hopefully to make it easier for people, if they already own a grave, that we can, we can use it.
So do they handle the vaccine?
It's just at the discretion of the, what he can fit safely on a grave, so. But again, he was talking about the hill. Your low end of the grave is pretty shallow to where, to where you get to the burial, so you may not be able to do as many on the hill, but you could on the flat ground, so. We just updated the policies, basically to make it more convenient for people, and then the prices for Saturday and Sunday and holidays went up. It's tough for us to get coverage for, for an employee to come on a holiday, a Sunday, Saturday or a Sunday, so.
So what are the fees?
I have them here someplace. I had a schedule here, so Monday through Friday, if you arrive after two-thirty, there's an added two hundred and fifty dollar fee, because it's making our, our workers stay past their time. And in the winter, they're having trouble, if they come in after two-thirty, of getting out before dark and safely being able to finish their job, especially if they're on the hill and it gets dark, and they, so hopefully, we can get most people coming in before two-thirty. Saturday burials will add six hundred dollars, and an additional five hundred if they come in after two-thirty. Sunday burials is plus nine hundred, and then arrival after two-thirty, an additional five hundred as well. It's trying to discourage the holiday as much as possible, but if a family wants to do it, they still have the opportunity to do so.
Open the frame.
Yeah, well, it's just, at this point, it's tough for us to have people there.
So all the dirt is that being added to the, which you can see sometimes?
Yes.
Is that just increase, they're actually going to increase the cemetery?
Yeah, so the goal is that, well, they're going to keep bringing it as long as we allow them, I guess. And the long-term goal is to be able, it's going to be fifty years, but have burials on that, on out that way as well.
Did you say the holiday fees are the same as Sunday?
The, did I say holiday?
Not sure, I heard.
Sunday and holiday is the same.
Okay.
So nine hundred plus five hundred if it's after two-thirty.
So you want to do it during the week before two-thirty?
Yes, yes.
Is what you're trying to achieve for?
Yeah, it's just for the sake of our employees, trying to get them out and not stay over, and especially in the winter, we've definitely talked about, safety is an issue, depending where you're at in the cemetery, if you have, if you have a funeral procession coming in late. So that will go out to the funeral directors, I assume, tomorrow, so. Pool meeting was canceled, moving on to the pool for this past month. I would like to announce a vacancy on the pool board. We had a resignation, so if anybody is interested, please let me know. Just briefly on the jet, I one hundred percent believe it was the right thing to do to put it on the ballot, you'll never convince me otherwise. Disappointed that Representative from Germantown decided to make many false statements along the way, including in the Germantown Press, but then use the information, or use the changes made to the jet by the two people he was targeting as reasons for it to pass, so. Definitely disappointed, but not surprised from him. I would also like to thank all the township employees for their hard work in getting the zoning office straightened back out. It's disappointing that our computer came in unusable, and we were locked out of our website and Facebook. Thanks to everyone who went above and beyond, disappointing that it went that way, but it just shows the character of the people we have here in getting us back on track, so I really appreciate that. And the last thing I have tonight, I would like to thank Sergeant Allen Turner for finally getting us over the fence.
Literally. Literally, you're over the fence.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Mark Snyder?
Yes.
Is he retiring at the end of this year?
No, after Memorial Day next year.
After Memorial Day next year, okay. So we're going to have to have a replacement for him.
Yes, so we- Yes, so we plan to post that in the fall.
In the fall?
Yes. We'll work with Mark. There's a plan in place.
To work with him?
Yep, and Mark wants to, I think we're going to try and make it so when we hire a new person, it's going to overlap, especially for the month of May as preparing for Memorial Day.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I was going to say there.
Yep.
He's got to be some working with him.
Yes.
I didn't know that was going to be at the end of the year or.
No, so.
At the end of Memorial.
Hopefully it's going to be.
Approximately a year from now.
Right, approximately a year from now. Maybe a little sooner. Have them work together for at least a month or two.
Yes.
Yep, that is the plan.
Okay.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Stubbs. My report, I attended the senior oversight committee meeting on four fourteen twenty twenty-two. Items of note from the meeting. Monday senior meal program is continuing to be doing very well. Director Shinua Erismen stated that the center has two hundred and fifty-one members out thirty-one from last year. Volunteer and sponsor support is picking up, as is the demand for host parties at the center. Board recommended that Frida Emmerich be up to the oversight board. And the board decided to increase the rental fees for the senior center to seventy-five dollars per hour from fifty dollars per hour to better cover the costs. And I wanted to thank the residents for passing the removal. I think that was big. I attended the MASEC in twenty twenty-two meeting of the Germantown council. Items of note there, one resident questioned why, questioned why Germantown chip was holding forty-six thousand dollars. Of the park lady on it, stated, why not release some of the funds to help construct the new basketball court playing for Bedouins Park? There was no response from the council. Council proposed an ordinance, an ordinance whose public hearing will be on six, two twenty twenty-two to ban the discharging of fireworks within the city limits. The new Ohio law goes into effect seven one twenty twenty-two, so we'll have that probably in place before the, the new state law goes into effect. Most of the meeting was to discuss the density of planned homes at the Wood Creek Reserve off Germantown and Dayton Road from forty-two to eighty-two. That's the one where Stephen Rousch is, wanted to do that development. The proposed minimum lot size was, site was a half, half acre and will sell for a hundred thousand dollars. Planning commission had posed the plan five to nothing. The council voted down the plan six to one, six to zero with one of Dayton. So who knows where that's going to go? The consensus is it's going to go to litigation probably, so let's see. The last thing, again, the need for the township to appoint a member to the jet board of directors. According to ORC seven five point seven two, the contract goes into effect thirty-one days after passage by electors, which will be June third twenty twenty-two.
Is it after passage or after certifying, the vote?
I think it's after passage. Either way, we've got some time. I mean, that's, that's the, if you know anyone who wants to do that, again, the, the first term for the township appointee is going to serve, it's going to be two years. And again, this is a non-paying position. So when I, when I talked to Tyler Rayhard, I said, do you hear the guy that should be there? Because he was a politician. I don't know if he will. Somebody would talks to him and see what he says. But it's, it's going to be, you know, this is my opinion, it's going to be very difficult. If you're starting from scratch, you have no idea what you're going to do. You've got five unpaid members, you know, so how did it get early to get big? And you're going to be amounting a huge lawyer bill to try to get this thing started because every step is going to have to be monitored by a lawyer or a boss, so. So the devil wasn't into the details of what I'm saying, so. So we'll see. Okay, that's all my report. Any old business?
Yeah, Jeremy.
Yeah, I was going to put it. Was it new business?
Either way.
Let's, let's go to new business.
I reviewed the bid from Randersley Incorporated and they have all of their required documents in order. And they did list Germantown chip on the certificate of liability insurance as our Otama lady wanted us to do, so they did follow that. The price from last year, as Mr. Potter was asking about, it's kind of not apples to apples because last year we used an emulsion liquid, which is basically a water-based asphalt product as the binder for the stone. We try to use that on higher travel, higher traffic, higher speed roads to try to mitigate any of the bleeding. When we get to some of the back roads where there's less traffic, less speed, less heavy vehicles, we can get away with using what's called a cutback asphalt, which is MC three thousand is its designation. It's actually an asphalt product. It's not cut with water. It's cut with distillants to make it, add heat to make it flow and then make the stone bind to hit as the distillants evaporate and the stone gets here. So there is some price difference between those two. I did some quick, quick research on the internet, see what some of, maybe what some of the other counties and stuff have been giving for MC three thousand. And Medina County just this year released a contract for two dollars and twenty cents square yard. So we're at two thirty-nine. They probably bid way more than we did Medina County. So with them being the only bid and them being in the ballpark, I believe of what some of the other prices I saw, it'd be my recommendation to board approve or accept the bid from Randersley Incorporated for the unit cost of two dollars and thirty-nine cents a square yard for MC three thousand and four dollars and seventy-eight cents a yard for double seal MC three thousand for the twenty twenty-two chip seal program for Germantown chip.
What was prices compared to last year?
Uh, last year was a dollar seventy-five and this year was two thirty-nine. So like I said, it's not really apples to apples. There is some difference there. There is a cost increase to go to the MC three thousand because you're getting a whole lot more asphalt. Now, those roads tend to self-heal a lot quicker than like the, the water-based emulsion. Now, they tend to, tend to bleed a little more too, but on the back roads, it's less of a concern than it is on the main grounds, so.
And how many square yards are we going to have?
Our estimated, our estimated quantity was thirty-seven thousand two hundred and nine. So that total would have been eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars fifty-one cents.
Is that, is that what, somewhere close?
Yeah, well, that was, that was what the two dollars and thirty-nine cents per square yard times thirty-seven thousand two hundred and nine was eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So we, we kind of figured in at eighty thousand. Now, in our contract, we always worded per the prosecutor's attorney or prosecutor's office more or less. So that means it's a unit cost. We could do less to lower the cost or if we found more money, we could do more to, you know, within reason, you know? You can't go in there, get that kind of price and then say, oh, we're going to do five hundred square yards. They, they probably would go for that. And it would legally have some recourse, but.
I just didn't know the total cost.
Yeah.
Was about what she was hoping this.
Yeah, like, like total, we had a hundred thousand available, but we tried to keep it in at eighty thousand dollar range. Now with the numbers, with Butter Street kind of fluctuating, we might have to adjust that on this side. We did plan on doing some cave seal this year, which that's kind of the last on the list. You know, obviously the paving on Butter Street was first, chip seal is second priority. And then the cave seal in Metabrew Estates was kind of our back burner. So it's kind of looking like that. It's getting whittled down.
So we still have sequel to get.
And we still have sequel that hopefully we'll be able to use some ARPs, so. But like I said, my recommendation that we accept the bid from Randersley Incorporated.
Is your plan that all of us would be just single sealed then?
Yes.
Even though they quoted?
Yeah, they always quote double seal just in case you find an area that you want to hit twice. And it's always twice the cost of single seal, so.
And then, how do they do that, like patchwork? So they can go through it, patch it and then go through and do the whole thing?
They, they.
Then call that.
Within reason.
Within reason.
Because you don't, if you're going to do that, I want to make sure they know that beforehand because they're bidding it as just going, going out and spraying it and laying it and making time.
I understand it's moyer, well, yeah, but moyer is pretty rough.
It's going to get a lot of patching before they ever chip seal it, so.
So we would do this via resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five. Someone would like to introduce that resolution?
A resolution to accept the bid, the unit cost bid from Randersley Incorporated in the amount of two dollars and thirty-nine cents per square yard for MC three thousand single seal and four dollars and seventy-eight cents per square yard for MC three thousand.
You, you're making that motion?
Yes, yes.
He's talking for me.
That's good. That's good. Is there a second resolution, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five? Any discussion?
Thanks, Jeremy.
Your, your first big resolution?
And Jeremy did.
No, no, you did it. Okay, if I, hearing no discussion, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Very good. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five is adopted.
I was just surprised that you didn't do a point four. It's going to get real ugly. Uh, any other new business? Want to thank the IT team for the women.
If it's recorded, we'll be all right. We'll find out.
Find out. Uh, if no other new business, I'd like to make a, or could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Who made the motion? You did, Mark?
I guess I.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned at eight ten.